I'm gonna call this evening's meeting of the planning commission board. And the management of business is pleasurable region.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America. And to the rule which stands by nomination, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Frank is up. Mr. Song is back. Your name is Commissioner Levin. Well, we barely have a court.
We have Commissioner Hidden on online. Okay, and it looks like Matt might be as well.
Eric, are you there? Okay, it looks like Matt and Erica both there. Might say so, so we know that he's there.
I'm here if you can hear me.
There we go. Yeah. All right. Any announcements?
Just wanna follow up, just wanna follow up the board, continue their conversation regarding having an outside consultant do an audit or review of the comprehensive plan. It wasn't an action item by the board, it was just a discussion item, so it sounds like Commissioner Donkey's going to put together a scope of work and presents a resolution to the board sometime in the next couple of weeks. But they did have a lengthy discussion on this idea this morning and then talked about the memo that was put of those provided by the planning commission, so if and when the decision is made, I'll report back concerning the trades. That's about all I have for announcements.
Well, I think it was pretty, well, maybe it's not so clear, but I thought it was fairly clear that it was going to grant some kind of resolution involving some scope of work, but it would not involve the planning. It would be only at the Board of Campground Commission's level. All right. Go to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I really like the fact that this expanded, that minutes are expanded, include more of what actually occurred. Under the action item, though, discussion decision, I would modify the paragraph, I think this was proposed by Eric. And I think it's fine, I just would change it a little bit. The second line where it says discussion revolved around, I would just say, I would take out that language, that discussion revolved around and start with planning committee, the planning commission. Robotic planning commission deliberated on proposal period. And then on the next sentence, I would say the commission agrees that a consultant would not be helpful at this point. Eric. And when the rest of this is fine. Any other corrections, additions, complications? If not, no objection, the minutes are approved as amended.
Hey Alan, sorry to interrupt you again, but there was the other change I suggested making as well, did you not agree with that one?
Where was that?
That was down under the title called comprehensive plan discussion, I had simply added a sentence in there that we, the planning commission, had agreed that the draft of the land use component was indeed ready to go before the B O C C, that was not clearly stated before.
Well.
Did I misremember what occurred last week?
Please say.
Mister Commissioner Hidden, can you say where that is again, please?
Sure, if you go down to the section that starts out comprehensive plan discussion slash workshop. And then go down to that last little paragraph in that section. That's where I had added the planning commission agreed the current version of the land use component after the data tables were updated during the meeting is ready to be presented to the B O C C.
No, that's actually not accurate because what we agreed is it could be set for hearing.
Okay, then my bad.
All right, any other suggestions, modifications? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving to public comments, this is the time for public to bring anything to our attention that we think we ought to. Here.
Can, nobody? Can we ask questions? Can we ask questions?
Well, probably can't, probably can't promise you I have an answer, you can ask, I guess.
Well, so.
I had to state your name and your.
Yes, Jeremy Colkins, Bonner County resident, so I am in Acre Ridge in Bonner County and I was in the process of doing a family division and my surveyor this week or last week said, you know, hey, this is off, you know, this is a moratorium of this has been put through, so I watched the commissioner hearing. Listen to some of, you know, what was said and, you know, I, I, we have a development right next to us that is, you know, a basically been split up multiple times, which so I'm very in favor of, you know, better oversight, but is there a, I guess what I'd like to hear is, is there, and probably it would be from, from those guys, is is the plan, according to the attorney, it was like, we're just gonna throw this, this type of division out, like it's kind of being directly opposed to that division from going forwards, so I guess my question is, is there a plan to revise that type of division or is it just going to lump it into the short flat process? So, yeah.
Where it stands at the moment. And that is, I just read through the ordinance. And they actually struck all provisions regarding private land divisions and family divisions. So right now, the only way to process that is under a short flat.
Right.
So we will get into this discussion later, but it's somewhat unclear in view of the way the the action of the board of county commissioners was drafted as to what really we're supposed to do with it, because they struck. So we're gonna have a discussion about that, also I guess the bottom line answer is, we're not sure.
Good, good, wow, at least they should not sure else.
So it's a good question. All right, any other comments? Okay. All right, you've got several items, which is on here and I think we need to kind of take them out of the order that they're in the agenda. Then I think we'll go to the view of the B O C C's direction, his planning staff regarding the change to the process, the RV park and campground code. One of the correspondence of uses and use table. So my understanding was that they, they wanted to strike the conditional approval or conditional permit out of the commercial use statement for rural at Forest, and I guess rural service center. So yes, and again, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do, I mean, if that's what they wanted to do, why don't they just do it? I had a question about, I understand the concern about rural and at Forest. Doesn't make any sense to me to strike it from rural service center, I'm not sure why that's there and maybe somebody can explain it to me. It seems to me when I read, when I read the rural service center district, it seemed like an appropriate place for an RV. Anyway, Alex, you want to enlighten us?
Hello. On that portion, sure.
So Jake Development, there are a handful of different ways in which a text only could be processed, so part of the discussion tonight really isn't to dive into the merits of this type of request, it's more to refine and create the box in which you guys have to review this request, so this is a directive or a direct request by the, by the county commissioners, so I don't think it's the position of the planning commission to look into and debate any standards of review for this or to further modify the request that's been applied for essentially, so in this, in this instance, the, the board is essentially acting as the applicant and directing staff to processes change, so rather than going in and like debating what should or shouldn't happen, I more wanted to, to help you guys define like what, how we're, how we're processing this type of, of request by the board, so this will come as a, at a hearing here in the next month or so. We've, we have an application that we've put together, it's a relatively simple as far as the changes in the code, right, you're, you're eliminating two conditional uses, one from, or three different zones. It'll be then the, the planning commission's job to evaluate that at the hearing and make a recommendation to the board. So in your deliberation, if, if you recommend the changes occur in two of the three zones and that can be your decision or your recommendation to the board, then it'll be up to the board to process or to, to evaluate that change and either accept or, or change the recommendation, so, does that help?
Yeah, so I guess the only question I would then have is, do we have a workshop before we have the hearing or not?
No, I don't think so, given that we really shouldn't be diving into any standards or any other changes. This is a very clear request by the board, so it's more me coming to you guys and saying, this is what I'm directed to do by my bosses. And I'm more or less trying to make sure that you guys don't take this change and make it bigger than it is. Right now, they've given very specific direction, I, I had some concerns that IRAs or just some potential unintended consequences, the board took that and said, no, we still want to go forward with this change that we're, that we want. And they directed staff to process that change, so that's what we're doing.
So, do you have any insight into why rural service centers included?
I don't, not off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and listen to that meeting again. I'm not sure if they deliberated specifically on rural service center or they included it because it's found in the rural areas, so.
Okay, so I guess we'll set it for hearing, right?
Exactly, so like I said, we, we're filling out the application, we'll get, usually put like an appendix to the application that includes the red line version of the code, in this case, it's pretty simple. The, we'll, we'll do an evaluation against the policies and the comprehensive plan, we'll present that at hearing. And then you guys will make a recommendation of the board, but what I didn't want to happen is something similar to what happened to short term rental code, where you take a small change and say, you know what, we, we want to see other standards and other things changed throughout, so let's workshop this further and separate it from, so I just wanted to help kind of define the scope of review for the planning commission, if that, if that kind of makes sense.
Okay, so is the same, is the same group of the M L Ds?
No, so this is, if you're done with this agenda item, we can move on to the next one.
I guess we're not.
Yeah. If that helps kind of clarify any, any other questions on the RV park before we kind of jump to the next.
The idea when we would have it scheduled?
So assuming we get done with our application side, I asked Alex to finalize everything this week instead of for a hearing, so we'll have it done in the hearing in the next twenty-two to thirty days, so like I said, within the next, within the next month or so, depending on your guys'.
So that would be, because we do have the, our hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't set it for the same.
No, absolutely. So it'll probably be the second meeting of, or first meeting of next month, if we can get the, the noticing done in time.
Okay, was it your sense that if, you know, based on that hearing and whatever input we get and whatever thoughts we have, that we could modify, we could maybe leave it in rural service center or we grab a direction that we're just gonna follow?
So I think you can make, at that time, you can make a recommendation. And that recommendation could be simply, we recommend it be removed from this zone and this zone, but not this, you can make a recommendation that planning staff and the plan, future planning commissioners do a dive or do a further review of standards in the future, or something, you can deliberate and create your own findings. But what I don't want you to do is, is make additional changes to the code, I think you need to make a, a recommendation off the code change that's been directed by the, by the board. So, is that, does that help?
Are there some known examples of issues that have arisen out of these being allowed in a rural service center that, I mean, it would help if there are, it would help if we were aware of them. Or is it just a general principle that they thought they shouldn't be there?
There is one RV park that has become pretty politically charged, that's in a rural area.
The rural service center or?
It's a R five zone area, and I think that's the driving force behind this, this change.
I understand the rural and the forest areas, it's, I'm, I'm kind of a little bit with Alan and I'm not sure why they should not be permitted conditionally in rural service center. I mean, so allow commercial use for the rural service center after all, right, so.
Part of our, our staff report, we can include a list of all of the approved RV parks and what zone they were in, if that helps you.
I just, and I'm gonna have the same comment, by the way, about that subject, it would help to understand the specific examples of those that have become issues, because if we're gonna be changing things, we have to understand how best to change them, try to correct whatever issues exist, so.
So we'll look at any approved RV park campgrounds, since this code was adopted, I want to say it was two thousand eighteen, if I remember right. And like I said, we'll include that as a table of some kind, with final numbers and maybe the number of RV, RV spaces approved and then what zone it was in, or something. Thank you.
Because there are, there are there are rural service centers, I think, in a, in what otherwise is a recreation center. Right? But it makes no sense. That's where they should be. I don't know, anyway, okay. So we want to talk about the M L Ds, I have a question about the M L Ds. Reading through this ordinance, oh, that, yeah, I guess ordinance. I was looking at the code section. Sixty-five, sixty-seven, sixty-five, twenty-three. Which authorizes on an emergency basis, an ordinance for a moratorium. Not an ordinance and a moratorium. Yeah, but ordinance seven twenty is both. So they so the county commissioners have already struck all the provisions regarding minor land divisions. And and families, families, yeah, family divisions. So I, I'm not sure what it is we're supposed to look at, because after a hundred eighty-two days if nothing happens, then the ordinance stays the way it is, I mean, are they gonna, are they gonna? I, I, I'm, it seems to me that there's, they did two things when they were only supposed to do one. Either ordinance or a moratorium, not an ordinance, yeah, and a moratorium.
Yeah, so the, the statute here, it uses those words kind of synonymously, and sometimes it refers to it as an ordinance, sometimes as a moratorium. So when I asked Bill about this, I said, do we need to do this by ordinance or resolution, I said, well, it kind of seems like we need to do it by ordinance. So when you look at that ordinance seven twenty, at the very bottom, it says this essentially expires after a hundred eighty-two days, so that ordinance would become.
What does that mean, though, does that mean that the, that those code sections spring back into use?
Yeah, unless, unless it's appealed before them. Not appealed, sorry, amended prior statement.
Okay. All righty, I disagree with his finding, that's having been through this with local governments before, the action is, we're declaring a moratorium for safety reasons and it suspends the action under this code. That's it. There was no need to eliminate, if the code is eliminated, what action is suspended, there's no code to eliminate. Do you see the logic? And, and so I don't know, I don't know where it stands, yeah, the strange part is, the footer on the document itself says it's a resolution. The heading says it's an ordinance, look at the, look at the. So, yeah, it's just.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, I'm not sure what we're, what we're supposed to do with this, I mean, it looks to me like it's dead done. And do they, does the board wanted something to replace it? A, a better situation, a better code, a better series, better process or something? The other thing, another thing that strikes me from sixty-seven, sixty-five, twenty-three is it says they can enact an ordinance without any action of this commission.
Right, right.
Because it's emergency, so is that what they've done?
Yes, but it's still limited.
Why are they referring it back to us?
It's still limited in the duration of that, of how long it's, it's applicable for.
Of what? The ordinance, I mean, it's a moratorium, but again, a moratorium says this code section is its suspension. And then they wipe out the code section.
I think what we're saying is it's not clear that that code section that's been struck comes back after a hundred eighty-two days.
Well, look at the.
Unless there's another action that's taken.
Look at section three, it talks about moratorium period, and it gives a specific that it not to exceed a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty-two days. And, and it gives some specifics as to what the county's gonna do in the meantime, at the very bottom, this is a moratorium shall expire on September twenty-third, twenty-five unless otherwise repealed or extended pursuant to sixty-five.
So, well, actually what it says is that we evaluate and adopt new land use regulations that ensure the proper infrastructure, emergency access, and environmental protections. It doesn't say that these other code sections spring back into existence, as it contemplates new land use regulations.
We have six months to revise this, that's what we have.
Well, I, I my reading of it is, and the fact of a moratorium, there is no moratorium because the code doesn't exist. So there's unlimited time to come up with new code, to replace the sections that were eliminated. And I'd like to give Bill's opinion of that, but, you know, again, on many of these things that I've seen over the decades in various municipalities under various state codes. And that's how it works. So, we, I know I expected the commissioners to say, okay, planning department come up with some thoughts and drafts and we will workshop it for planning commission because it is a land use code. And come up with something better that fixes the, the alleged ills of the P L P and, and famous with code. Which is kind of what it says at the bottom, you know, it's implied, it's already stated, there's, there's gonna be something to replace what's broken. But in my opinion, they didn't have to put the axe to it. So should we set this for a workshop?
So we have, so one, I wanted some direction from the planning commission, so knowing now that this is under moratorium, that we have six months to come up with the revisions. One thing we've started doing is looking at other counties, looking at the history of the minor land division code, why do we have it? What were they trying to solve when they, when they put this in place, what's the history of the family exemption code, what were they trying to solve there? What are the major issues we have as a planning department's point of view? And then how other counties solve this issue, or do they have it, and if so, how have they solved it? So, what you do, well, I lived through with the planning department, the changes back in twenty twenty-one where they were going to put some further restrictions on the mine land division. And then, I want to say May, the, the board punted the changes back to the, the planning and zoning commission at the time to further revise it, and from May until, I want to say August eighteenth or something along those lines, August fifteenth, when it finally got adopted, we had a hundred and twenty something applications come in because everyone saw the, the door getting swung shut and they wanted to get their applications in power too. So Bill told me at the time, if we ever do this again, we're gonna do a B M moratorium and then go change the code. So that's what we did, we, we've had some internal frustrations with the planning department on how to interpret and apply these codes consistently. So we've had a number of appeals of denied minor land divisions, and I've seen inconsistent application and interpretation by the board. So given that these are administratively approved, meaning by my staff, right, by the planning department staff. When you have this gray area, it, it really should be black and white, it should be very clear cut as to who qualifies. So I think at the time in twenty-one, the intent was clear, but I've had a lot of applications come in from different reps and, and property owners trying to interpret this code in different ways, and it's been as you say, it's just been inconsistently applied by, by planners and by the board on appeals. So that's what, and if you go back two weeks ago, yesterday, I took just three different scenarios to the board and asked them to interpret them. And the way they interpreted it was different than, and it wasn't in any specific application, it was just lines on, you know, just drawings. And the way they interpreted those was even different than what we had been. And I just decided at the time, it's, we need to, we need to do a major revision of the mining land division code. And then at the same time, if you don't touch the family exemption, everyone then becomes family, they're gonna use that as the least standard land division process, so we've been needing to do a hard look at them at the family exemption as well. So I thought, look, we need to take both these up at the same time. So if you look at that ordinance seven twenty, it includes a revision just to the definition of short flat. So in the meantime, people can still apply for any land division under ten lots as a short flat. So it doesn't refine it just to five to ten lots, it just says ten lots or fewer, so.
Why isn't that just the answer?
It could be.
Yep.
Like, like I said, we're, we're kind of at the beginning of this process of what should this look like? I think part of that is just look at the history and again, look at other counties and how they solve it. If you want, planning staff to come up with some red line versions as some options here, we can give you several options and workshop it internally and come back in two weeks and kind of review those options with you. What I do with the, with the planners, a good example is the depth width ratios, we did some major revisions to that a couple of years back. So we revised it, and then we go through and like draw so many scenarios, how can we break this, okay, that doesn't work, how can we refine the language? So we did that over and over again until we come up with the draft that we couldn't break anymore, and it's been a pretty solid, if you want to call it that, standard that's on, I could have now. And I've only had one person interpret it in an odd way and I just completely disagreed and I don't, I don't think it, it was even appealed to the board and the board didn't understand how they were trying to interpret it, so. I mean, that, that is what I kind of intend to do with this case, but I wanted to get some direction from the planning commission first.
So, so as with the, with the RV park example, you know, I, I've heard a lot of assertions about this, this is, this sort of stuff is happening and that sort of thing is happening through mainly through the M L Ds, but I guess maybe also to the family exemption to some extent. But not a lot of specifics. And so I would like to understand, I'd like to hear those examples, you know, a few examples of each case in which you think there's a gray area or something isn't working the way we intended it to work when we wrote that back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Sure.
So that, which I think is gonna be necessary, I mean, if we're just gonna say, okay, we got short plots and that's, that's the only process we're gonna, we're gonna leave in place for a smaller number of land divisions, that I guess that's one approach, but if we're gonna try to replace it, something, with something that fixes those issues, I think I would like to understand what they are in more detail so that we can be sure we actually fix it. So.
Um. This is Matt, I don't know if I can say anything or you want me to wait?
No.
You know, my understanding that some of these questions for the moratorium was regarding access and flooding, erosion, stormwater and things like that. So I, I was wondering if we can get staff when we go ahead and put this together, to go ahead and, and bring those items. You know, if you go apply for a billion location permit right now, you have to have it signed off by the fire chief in that district to go ahead and verify that they can go ahead and get their trucks in there, so that, so the fire EMS thing, I think that, that has a check and balance to it, but also when you go ahead and look at the building location submission checklist, you know, includes a site plan, elevation drawings, of course, the fire district approval. Commercial standards, encroachment permit from Bonner County Rowan Bridge, you have to have that. Uh, erosion control and stormwater worksheet uh found in twelve seven twenty. Uh, may be applicable if, you know, if the technician or staff believes so. Uh, floodplain development, that's another item that's already on there. Uh, geotechnical an- analysis from twelve seven sixty can also be applied at the building location. You know, time, uh, wetland delineation reconnaissance, Loma FEMA maps. So I'm curious, eh, when we do go ahead, if. And we meet and discuss this, if we can go ahead and and bring those items, because I believe. Uh, a lot of them already has a check and balance, so to speak, at the time of a billion location permit. Um, and for a lot of these people who are trying to split their land now, there, there may not be a building on it for a few years. Um, and it'd be great to go ahead and compare side by side on the M L D and the short plat and also the building location permit. Um, as far as what is covered. Uh, and and what is not. Oh, and also, I, I, you know, uh, it was, it was referenced before in twenty twenty one. Uh, when there was discussions to go ahead and uh change the non-contiguous language. Um, and then between May and August, there was a hundred or a hundred and twenty application. That was, that was several months worth. I, I really wish it could have been on the agenda, even if it was a twenty four or forty eight hours or whatever it needed to be. I think that would alleviated uh some of the conversation. Thanks.
But I understand both the commissioners' uh requests from staff. Um. Matt, you want us to do a comparison of standards? For short plat subdivision and what's currently required in a minor land division and then with a building location permit? Who gets reviewed, who requires sign off?
Correct, because I think a lot of those are already, you know, some of the the questions regarding stormwater, I think that's. That check and balance is already in place at the time of the billing location permit. Uh, as well as uh fire ingress and egress and access, that has to be signed off by the fire chief and whatever district that's in at the time of the B L P.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you you could have a land division with no B L P, so.
Yeah.
True, yeah. So I I think you have to look at a. Different silos here.
Okay.
Well, maybe you should give us some. How do you think we should proceed with this? It sounds to me like. Like we need to have some examples of some of the issues and problems that have come up and uh. You know, my understanding of 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 the reason why it was if they were created matter line divisions and family. Divisions was because of the burden and time that the short plat took. So are we still looking at something that is less onerous than the short plat? But still contains all the protections and what are those protections that we need? Um. You know, what, what language of the M L Ds and the family divisions that. Uh, that are causing problems in terms of interpretation, you know, what? How are some people interpreting it's contrary with the. Fine departments interpreting it uh and what the board of county commissioners might be interpreting it. I mean, we need, I think we need some, right now, I think. Uh, at least speaking from my own. I just want to have the information.
Yeah, I I get it. It's, it's, yes, I understand. So I'll get some specific scenarios. I'm not gonna give you. Well, I'll give you some specific scenarios. So I'll find some properties or maybe we can just draw it up. Like rather than look at individual pieces of property, um, but we can give you some specific scenarios that we've had in the past. And then I can uh talk about the conflicting language as well.
Um, are we talking about other problems with design? Partial design?
Not partial design, no. Um, there's some standards that there's that are concerning. There's. For like one, one easy example or two easy examples is there's a provision in the minor land division code that says. That after two years, you can essentially create more lots with a minor land division. So does that mean? Is it lots next door or only the lots created by our minor land division? The wording in it isn't clear enough. And that conflicts with the standard that's in twelve six hundred C, which is the one that was added in twenty twenty one, which says that you can't use minor land division. To continuously to avoid the subdivision process. So we've actually gone to court over the word subdivision. So the subdivision, as we define it, is eleven lots and more. So does that mean you can use a minor land division to create? Eight lots or ten lots, you can do three or four of them next to each other, or is that circumventing the code? Do you have to wait two years? Between each one of those. You see what I mean? Like, there's some really conflicting language in this that. When trying to interpret and trying to apply it, it's been really difficult and I have. Too many arguments um with too many surveyors uh over how to interpret this code. And it's taken institutional knowledge of. Call them case law, if you will, uh, different appeals on interpretation from the board um to try to apply this to different scenarios. So. It gets complex pretty quick and it becomes gray and muddy really quick. So. Um, that's why.
What problems have you had? Regarding the processing of short plats?
Honestly, we have had very few short plats because the minor land division has been used in failing exemptions has been used so prevalently across the county.
Has been used. For contiguous parcels, is that what you're saying?
Minor land divisions? Not as much as prior to twenty one. It comes into effect whenever you have this two-year clause and how does that?
Two years is up and then they feel they can go ahead with what they wanted to do anyway.
So, and I've had different interpretations of that two-year clause by different commissioners over the years. So. And then then it.
I think for me personally, that's gonna be something that's I'm gonna wanna understand.
Sure.
Because, because I don't. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm probably. Maybe like, maybe like Don and Matt, oh, we, we all know what we intended when we wrote that.
Mm hmm.
Right? And and if if the language isn't sufficient to accomplish what we intended, okay, we have to revise it now. Um. I didn't find it to be unclear at the time, but but then I'm not faced with a. Bunch of creative surveyors coming in trying to find every, every loophole they can, so.
Yeah, that's, that's our burden, so.
Will the chair allow? I don't think really. Well, I'm, we're trying to understand.
I understand. Well, he asked for specifics and there's someone online who has. Very specific.
Yeah, well. We'll get to it. Not tonight, but we'll get to it.
I'm sure there'll be a time in here.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, well, this is what's we're doing in the process. And then we're talking workshops or. So, so.
Yeah.
But that would be what you suggested bringing a. A package of information to us, I think that'd be great.
I've started gathering it together. Um.
Just we gotta understand the problem.
Yeah. And then I will uh, I'll highlight this, the specifics and then give you some red line versions of some ways to solve this. Um, and then some suggestions by staff, so.
Good.
If I would take that as like a, as a, as a place to start, right? I'm not suggesting that that is the end all solution, but. We'll see if we can redline this and come up with a few different versions. And then like some changes twelve six hundred C you add, rather than avoid the regular subdivision process, you can say subdivision and short plat, right? So that solves one. Mixing all together, the two year requirement, say every property gets one, like, but then. You have the other problem of switching prop- property switching hands. So if I sell it to so and so, do they get an M L D max? So I think we tried to solve that in a way that that language is written as like a conveyance of. Like a, what parties, uh, how does that read? Through a series of other conveyances.
Acting in concert.
Yeah, acting in concert, so that's taken us. Like the, I think the intent on that is great, but it takes planning staff like looking through different L L Cs and who owns what and who's related to who. To try to interpret that and apply it correctly and inconsistently. So it, it's been a little heartburn. Um, there's some other. Like I said, there's been a number of these issues when, when trying to effectuate this, this, or try to um regulate this code. Fairly across the board that's been difficult, so. Yeah, so I think I have some good direction from the, from the commissioners. If there's anything other, other information you want from me to gather for the next two weeks, I'm happy to. Anything else?
No, I, you know, I guess, um. I still guess I'm, I'm unclear as to whether. You know, we go through all this process and you try to refine this and that, the other thing. Uh, is, are we spinning our wheels? I mean, because. I mean, one way to solve it is to just wipe to a concept, which is what they've already done, so. I, I don't think we need to go through a long process. Yet the end. Is just eliminate M L Ds and family divisions.
Oh.
And make everything a short plat. That's less of, you know, eleven lots.
So essentially, that's turning the clock back. Why, why was it necessary to turn the clock ahead? Back in two thousand sixteen or so. When the M L Ds came in. Uh, you know, just to, to repeat that, so that's all the record. You know, what, what Milton, the plan during the time, what he looked into, what the problems were, the things he was hearing both from the commissioners and from the public. So just why, why was not the four-lap subdivision and then everything else was a subdivision that time, then it went to ten lot? In short plats, then rest were subdivisions, and then it went to the M L Ds up to four. So it's this progression of making it quote easier and less expensive and so forth. The, the major problem they were, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to catch up.
That is, that was, that was about it. So that's my recollection. But it'd be good to hear that.
The major problem they were trying to solve. I, I went back and looked at the staff report from twenty sixteen. This wasn't a s- a simple. Or even a process that was crafted just by the planning commission. They did four public meetings around the county. Like it was, they try, tried to elicit comment and get people's um input on it before they made the change, so. Just a heads up, like, it wasn't just an overnight decision by the, by the uh board or by the, by the planning commission at the time or P and Z. So they had something like four hundred and sixty, according to the staff report, uh, land divisions that year, like uh properties created. And when I reached out and asked Milton about it, he said two hundred of those were essentially illegally created via deeds. And oftentimes, um, those, so they would get sold to somebody else. And then that person would have to come in and say, oh, this is a three acre lot in a five acre or three acre parcel in a, in a five acre zone. So they have to come in and get a lot size minimum variance and then have to do a short plat on an individual lot to create it legally, so that they can vent jills on it. So that's, that's the problem they were trying to solve is that the prob- the process was too difficult under the short plat. So people were just deeding it off altogether and there wasn't a line of communication from the land records department in the planning department. So that when these deeds got recorded, if they didn't have a planning stamp on them saying these are legal, you know, per planning. Like that wasn't getting routed back to us for further review. So that is now occurring. So when somebody deeds off a parcel. If it doesn't have a stamp from planning, those get, those get routed back to compliance and then we get a hold of the property owner. We red flag on our side to say this is a non-billable property, it was created legally and we have a whole process established and we try to get ahead of it. Um, so that it doesn't change hands and people have an opportunity to come in and do it legally, so. Um, that's the major, if I look back at the history, um, thing they were trying to solve is just illegal land creation. So they wanted to make the process easier so people actually follow it.
So that, but that issue doesn't exist right now.
Part of the issue doesn't exist, um. Right? So we have, we have the compliance route and we have the line of communication with the land records department through the assessor's office. So there's that side of it's been solved, um. The other side of, if you make this too difficult, are people gonna follow it? I don't know, because we've had this for the last, you know, seven years, eight years, so. If we eliminate that, will we go back to a time whenever people are just trying to create or are, are just gonna go back and create illegal lots? I don't know. So. Again, all this is just looking at history. Um, we can try to forecast what's gonna happen in the future, but.
Yeah, I had a neighbor talk with me the other day, not anything about planning or the county or anything, he just said. I'm gonna split up ten acres and give it to my kid. And just some deed of it.
Mm hmm.
And I said, well, I, I, I've got all the process. Why? What process? I just wanna deed it to my son. That's a big deal about that. He said, well, if you did that, then he would come in to get a building location permit and say, you're gonna legal lot. No, well, that's not right, but. Yeah, see, it doesn't, public knowledge and. I mean, read the paper today, Governor said, I'm sure glad we're a free state. Everything is okay here. That's what people come in thinking. How do you break that? All right, well.
And read the manual on the way in.
You know, you think, you know, I think it might be. Helpful, and I, I'm, I would like to have some high clarification from the. Kind of commissioners as to whether or not they, you know, their goal is really just to eliminate these code sections, or what we do.
Right, so this was born of the planning department. This wasn't a commissioner-driven um request. So they, they approved it, they, they saw the merit in, in the. The concern that I brought up. Um, so this is, this is really, I, I don't think it's a direction or a directive given by the, by the board. Um, they approved it and said, go forth and make that, she makes some changes, review it. So if, in the end, we look at all this and say, there's not a way to solve all these concerns outside of going back to just requiring a short plat and a subdivision. Or a subdivision, right? So that could be the end result of all of it, but I think it's, I think we're, we're owed. A further review by, by this body and the planning department to the, the citizenry. To show that we've gone through an exercise of evaluating this and try to solve these and uh try to create the standards correctly. And if the, in the end, like, we just can't figure it out, um, then that's what we end up with, so. I don't think that, well, that's my perspective.
I guess we'll forge ahead. Uh, you know, I guess I'm a little gun shy because. Well, we've spent. But almost, what, three years, so.
Yeah.
On a comprehensive plan, which they're not gonna apparently have a consultant rewrite, so. You know, it feels like I wasted time, but anyway, that's all we'll do. All right, so uh I guess the other item is uh.
Look at the goals and objectives and policy.
Okay, the implementation plan.
Has it stated anywhere that this is an implementation plan?
Yeah, so the code is. But it's in the, you mean, as opposed to a component?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Implementation component. Okay. It's just, you know, you throw a word out and it starts to mean something. Then they say, whatever, what is this? Which one is this? Let's.
So I'll be, uh, see it down here, it says general discussion of components of the implementation plan, timeline of updated components text. Is required. Well, I think it, it is required, gonna have to.
Yeah.
Look at it. Um. I suggest that we. Go through it and. And make the revisions that we, we need to. I mean, we have adopted components. Now, and we need to look at the. So as objectives and policies, I have the. That would uh implement those. Now adopting components. So I sat down with. My computer screen, two, two faces on it, and I put each component up and I looked at the. Implementation component for that. Lane component in the plan, another component. And two, two exercises went through, read the components. Did it outright suggest a policy or, or a goal or something? If so, was that reflected in what we wrote as objectives and goals? And policies for that component? Or not? And then the question was, why didn't it? Or what should it? Um. And then looking at the. Looking at the implementation component itself. Or consistency, whether or not. The goals, read as goals, the objective, read as objectives, the policy, read as policies, all the data statements, or were some of the policies actually goals and those kind of things. So it surprised me a little bit that I didn't come up with more suggestions. I came up with a bunch of questions, as you'll see in that document, but. Yeah, you, you look at. Open up implementation component. And at the bottom of the list.
Oh, edits, edits for work.
And that puts it in comment mode, so the comments are often right. Yes, you page down a little bit, but starting out with property rights. So I'm gonna, this is one of my pet peeves. If you strike your thumb with a hammer. What is the impact of that hammer on your thumb? Not to your thumb. See what I mean? That's the. That's the. That would be the fact. And in this, in our implementation component, both verbages are used. Both languages are used. So historically, I've always seen it in E I Ss and so forth, where it talks in great deal about impacts, it's impact. On something. Impact on the environment. What is, what is the impact on your life? Of good healthcare? What is the impact on your life of going to college? What is, you see what I mean? Uh, to, what is the impact to your life from going to college? No. Sorry. Anyway. I'm gonna say that once, I'm gonna leave alone. So, so that changed.
Where it says impact to other properties, which should be what?
On.
Impacts on?
Yeah. Uh, I have a, I have a, of a more basic question. Uh, when we, when we did this, we were still looking at, um. Our code that talks about.
Our code that talks about um in accordance with the comprehensive plan as opposed to. Now what's later changed to these, what's of course amendments are concerned. Not contrary to or conflict with the policies. But my question now is whether or not we, we, to the extent that. Objectives really are, are policies. Should, you know, move some of these objectives into policies and then, like for instance, the property rights seems to mean both of those objectives need to be in the policies. I'm gonna get a property rights in particular.
Or, or more generally. I, I would like to see us move away from having goals, uh, goals and objectives separately. And I would guess as we go through this, we may look at some objectives and decide as, as I think you're right here, they probably are more. Correctly put in the policy section. We may also find some objectives that are more properly put in a goal section. It's, I always have a tough time. What's the difference between a goal and an objective?
Yep.
Well, policy is a, is a, to me, it's a, it's a statement of some action. That we're gonna do something and we're gonna not do something. Uh, to achieve, in this case, this context, to achieve some objective or some goal. Um, and, and I guess if we look at all of the different implementation sections, we may find some objectives that we wanna move to policies and we may find some that we. To say, well, it's a goal or I don't care if we call them goals or objectives to me, those are largely interchangeable words for the purpose of, of this, in this case, but.
I think though, when they, when we, we change at least the amendment section to say, not in. The policies that put. Some of these things need to be in the policies.
Yes, yes.
So, it's like, for instance, private property should be taken for public use just without compensation. It's also the law.
It's also the law. It doesn't even have to be stated.
So I'm not sure. Needs to be stated, but anyway, so I moved that into policies. I'd move impacts on other properties should be taken into account. When considering land use proposals, I'd say that.
The policy.
That's a policy. So I don't know. I mean, are there, are there?
So we suggest and just take out the objectives.
I think.
But I would, but more generally, I'm suggesting we take objectives out all through every one of these sections. And as we go through them, we should decide. Is this, is this particular point really a goal or is it really a policy? Or maybe it's something we don't even need altogether. I don't know. We may find some of those too, but sort of ones we need to add. So I would just have goals. And policies. And the policies are, are actions we're gonna implement to achieve the goals.
Exactly, exactly. Cause we have a very simple goal, protect the environment. That's the goal. How do you do that? Policies are. Keep away from water bodies.
I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Sure.
So I've all, have always been told that, you know, your goals and objectives can be subjective, but your policies need to be objective. I don't know if that's true. That's what I've always been told. But it makes sense. Uh, you know, you shouldn't have anything subjective as a policy. Um. And but yeah, as a goal, yeah, it can be subjective. Thanks.
Well, just further the, the, I, I think in here, I think. I think this discussion we had early on, this whole thing, yes, our policies were our action items. But I've seen other comprehensive plans where they actually have action items rather than policies.
Or in addition to policies.
Or in addition to policies or not.
Right.
I think we've kind of, I think we have to kind of. Put those kinds of things in policies, which we don't really have. But I would consider, you know, action items, one, two, three. Property rights may be, may be a little different because basically we're saying that, you know, we need to follow the general scope. Check with us to all that stuff, you know, but um. So I guess it's an action item, but it's also a policy. So. I understand what you're saying that, but.
I guess another way of saying it is to me, the policies need to be clearly enough stated that. Somebody who was in sitting in this room right now and four years from now can, can know what to do. Right? So they need to be clearly stated. Goals can be a little bit looser, in my opinion.
I, I agree.
Likely to be a little bit.
Unequivalent. I, I, I agree a hundred percent that we, I don't think we really need the objectives. Just go to goals and policies.
Goals and policies, yeah.
Even though sixty five away talks about objectives, but.
Well, it does.
But it doesn't.
I don't know that that's about it.
Well, I, I would suggest if we felt like we needed to include that in order to meet that requirement. I would say goals and objectives and policies.
Very good. Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
I think there's one of the components that actually has it, goals, objectives.
Yeah.
You know, one, one, once or twice it has it in there.
Right.
Yeah, okay, couldn't figure out an objective. That wasn't a goal.
It's a fine line, so.
Hey, question, if I may, sorry to interrupt there. And this is more foundational as well, regardless of the language we use, and I agree with everything I've heard so far. You know, combined goals and objectives were applicable and just have a separate policies that are more action oriented and related to that second. Uh, you know, policies, if we use that terminology. We want to, 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 to try and put some way to actually objectively measure. Our success in having whatever policies, you know, somebody mentioned action items and I've seen other comprehensive plans in the state that have. That use the term action items. Uh, but regardless, several, several other comprehensive plans actually include. Uh, some objective measures. So that, you know, a year or five years down the road, somebody could go back and say, okay, did they achieve what they intended to do? That makes sense?
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I, I, I don't know about that.
I would suggest we, well, I don't know if there, if, if we'll. Discover anything through the course of our discussion about the implementation section over the next months, but. If we do discover something that we, where we want to do that, we can, we can write that as a policy, right?
Yeah, we could.
We could say, you know. Annually go back and look at, you know, these parameters, X, Y, Z, you know, for these reasons.
And, and there is a couple of, a couple of the stated goals under the different components, they do say that. Uh, keep reviewing this, it says, go back annually and look at population.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Those kind of things. So there are some performance standards in there, but maybe some of these don't really warrant it. Uh, historic preservation. Uh, well, I suppose you could pull in there. Anyway. Keep that in mind as you go through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with regard to the property rights section, which is the first one that I brought up. I don't think you can really have a, a measurement of that.
No. I mean, really not.
I, I don't, I have no problem with your answer.
Okay. That one I had mainly for staff, the um. The word conditional got stuck in uh. Uh, policy four, the last sentence, the approval of conditional rezoning. We don't have any of that doing.
We do.
Conditional or is it, is it um? Is it contract zoning?
No, we have a, we have a way to do a conditional, like add conditions for the rezone. I wanna say it's in chapter nine. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's just a rezone.
But yeah, do you wanna say, cause that's a specific type of zone change?
So it's a, it's a zone change with conditions on it. So it can, it limits uses or uh limits density or something along those lines. So they could. Rather, what, what have I seen it used in the last couple of years? Not by this board, but by previous boards is. Let's say someone came in there for a marina and so they wanna switch to a rec zone. Um, so they would limit the. Their, their, um, they will learn their uses to just the, the use that they have prescribed. So.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still a rezone. So I'm not sure you need the conditional. You wanna, you just say rezone or not?
Because.
There's something to regular, to regular for taking analysis.
Either take it up or add conditional over there. It's an aisle of a conditional reason on request.
Well, but the way it's written, it doesn't, right? The way it's written.
Yeah.
Only the approval of a conditional rezone is subject to the taking analysis, not the approval of a more general rezone that doesn't have conditions associated.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I guess there is no reason for a taking's analysis if you approve the rezone without conditions.
Guess it depends on the step of.
Right, it's a, it's a hundred.
Well, technically it's.
Yeah. Property owner requested, like.
Yeah. And that's the thing, so.
What about my effective party? It, I mean, there's. They can make that claim. They may, may not be successful.
Yeah.
This, this eight thousand three.
I don't think that.
It says the property owner. Cause I think it looks at the property owner and ask for the taking's analysis. Not a neighbor or. Cause really, it's, it's, it's that property. Yeah, I don't know. I'll go back with that code.
Well, yeah, and, and that, and that language there in number four. That comes straight out of Lupa. I'd have to look it up for sure. Uh, but it, that, that, that quote land use planning act, the approval of conditional rezonage and all requests for rezoning may be subject to regulatory take analysis provided by Idaho code. Section sixty seven dash eight thousand and three, that, that comes straight out of Lupa.
Really?
Yeah, it also made the first sentence kind of covered all the rezoning. Downs or ups. So I imagine that that's probably why that's in there. It's been a while since I looked at this, so. Uh, that must be why we left it in there.
But it doesn't say how it should be reviewed.
Well, in accordance with the land, the regulatory taking analysis.
Oh, man.
I said, remember this property rights, so we're talking about.
Is that, uh, is that what? So sixty seven, chapter sixty five says.
Sixty, well, sixty seven, eight thousand three. In number five, it says a private property owner is not required to submit a request under this chapter. The decision by the property, private property owner not to submit a request under this chapter shall not prevent or prohibit a private, the private property owner from seeking. And illegal or equitable revenue, including. This whole thing is geared towards the, the county or city does something. And it, it's, it comes down hard on a private property. So they request a.
In my opinion.
It does.
Policy one covers it, I, in my opinion.
You say all decisions.
All decisions are subject to the.
Right, I think what this is trying to, the second, second sentence is basically saying that. That someone may can request a regulatory taking analysis.
Which is right there in eight thousand three. Private property, which property is subject of a governmental action.
An owner of private property is a subject of such action. So that's what it's basically saying is that. The approval can be subject to like a.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay. So.
Provided for, sixty seven, eight zero zero. I think that's.
Okay. And we got the squeeze drive versus pro strive.
I did.
Okay. Okay, move on to any other.
Well, I think, I think, you know, since this is pretty um. Pressure in our minds, I think we gotta look at the land use.
Okay. Page down the land use. Down here. Page six.
There's some edits on that.
It's one basis.
All right, so on this one, I have a bunch of suggestions. Starting with the first objective. That's it, that's a policy.
Action.
I think all the, all three of these objectives belong under policies, yeah, I agree. Yeah, I would also suggest that we need to um. Add a few more policies.
Yeah.
One would be in accordance with what we've said in the, well, that. I think we need to add a policy that deals with. A pre-approval or review. Of land use actions by, land use actions by um. The appropriate uh, probably for agents. Uh, I D Q, I D W R. So we need to craft something. I also think that we need to be in accordance with the, the. Conclusion we reached with regarding land use analysis. That there are sufficient vacant parcels. Uh, when you take into consideration. Uh, parcels which have, which have been divided under the current zone. Uh, to handle residential uses in the future. Think we need to come, put something in the policies that. Further, further uh land use division should be rare. I'm not sure how to make it more specific than that, but it should be rare.
You said land divisions or are you talking rezones?
Land divisions. I'll land, I guess, zones, yeah, I guess, well. Zones again, so rezone should be rare.
Yes.
I'm just gonna put some ideas here. This isn't the final version, but I mean, some of this.
Yeah, this is the idea. Obviously, I don't have the language. I haven't drafted the language. I also need, think we need to put in. I'm sure we all got these suggestions from um. Switzer. If I can find it.
Yeah, that's why my first comment. Partially addresses that. I retain the language to be talking, you know, my village areas.
Yeah, I think it goes into a policy though. I think.
Say that.
That um. The Alpine, the Alpine's, Billy's zone, that would just call it the second district. District um. Should recognize the challenges of higher density development and higher elevations to water county generally about thirty five hundred feet. I'm reading, I'm reading from uh Dan's.
Yeah.
Uh, like. About three five hundred feet where urban services are provided, but arrange of prototypes and. Develop mountainous conditions served area. Specific design standards to address deeper results and heavy snowfall will cover in these areas. So that's the, you, you have Dan's. Suggestion, that's the. That was the, the formerly. As a former part of the. Alpine land use. So in, in going through. Land use component, are there other suggestions as to policies we need to?
Well, my second in my note over there, incorporate the future land use mapping principles. In a policy or goal. Awesome. They're, they're pretty key. Or, or should we just, I don't know, I mean, it's kind of a. Kind of a burden to put all those in a policy.
Well, uh, I'm not sure what you mean. Can you give me some examples?
The principles we put in.
Principles for mapping. There's like seven, six or seven principles. And what, what guided us to put stuff on the map? Density for the belt and so forth and all those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're. Trying to draft it in terms of a policy. Land use map should be. Do considerable principles, something like that.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
You that I was trying to think of a way to truncate what those policies are, because you basically deal with. Locating. Dense development closer in and further out away from services with division ability or available and your access. The lower density goes out that way. Something along those lines, but. Might not just state that. The principles.
Maybe, maybe we should go back to the principles.
Yeah. Uh, see, this sound connected into the location, you know, you can't do a split screen. Well, yeah, check that piece out. But. Then you're gonna get into our drive.
Maybe.
Let's go ahead to. Share with me. Alright. Good, okay. So. If we look at our. Component. It's slower than my home computer. Amazing. And proposed. Yeah. Five of that. We can sit being, right? Or is that?
I think I think this first one is for a goal of a certain.
To rural territory.
Yes, yeah. I think that's already in our, in our goal.
I don't know. Alright, so it's here, so it's bouncing back and forth.
We actually. No way, yes. Well, now it's your strategy.
Okay.
There it's here.
Okay, so.
Well, I think it's kind of so much of them.
Staggered.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh. Hey.
Well, I mean, the second one, we could say something like. As a policy. Uh. We located. Denser. Zoning districts closer to the major transportation corridors in the county.
Yeah. Yeah, right. I mean, let's let's start with that.
It could be almost, I mean. As a starting point, put that, and we can, if we need to add or refine, we can do that over time. Um. We say something like, um. Future developments need to consider. Uh. Safety from a wildfire perspective.
Hmm.
Considering things like multiple access, egress routes. You know. Right. Other, other factors, I guess.
The principle.
Steepness of trees. Uh.
I think that's right. You guys, that's good.
Yeah. Urban development is, you know, we wanted to, we don't, I'm not sure we have anything that I would consider to be urban, but you you mentioned it here, but. You know, again. Maybe it's more about density, but urban development needs to be located closer into the cities.
Obviously, yes, it's definitely.
In in close to the den.
Yeah, or deaths.
Yeah. And then I don't, I don't know if we want to say something about commercial and industrial as a policy that. We want, I guess we had that, that's in the draft.
That's in the, that's in the approved.
Keep it.
Yeah.
Keep it in those areas where it already exists.
You know, since I think Davey just brought up, um, urban, urban development, incorporated cities. So I just pulled up sixty seven, sixty five oh two, which is the purpose of a local. Land use planning act. As as purpose of the actual shall be to promote the health, safety, general welfare of the people of the state of Idaho as follows, and the first thing is. To protect property rights while making accommodations for other necessary types of development, such as low cost housing and mobile home parks. So if we're gonna be going ahead and and taking different, uh, you know, portions out of sixty five oh two, maybe we should just make a reference to sixty five oh two.
We do in the last press. Yeah.
What what was that? I didn't, I didn't understand.
We do, we do reference it.
Yeah, the last bullet point. It's we've referenced sixty seven, sixty five oh two.
Oh, see, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not seeing on the screen that I'm looking at, sorry.
Well, that one's not up.
I was, I was crafting a different note to remind me of something, what, what section?
In the, in the component, Matt, itself. The land use component.
Oh.
Under section.
Yeah. We need a policy that references.
Uh. Yes.
Yeah, so that, this could be a policy.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Last bullet point.
Hmm.
I think it should be.
It should be.
Hmm.
What section do you guys under?
We're looking in.
One, one, one. The, the, are you on my news still?
In the draft.
Yeah.
No, I'm.
Come on.
Yeah.
Gotta keep up with this, Jake.
I was making notes on all this stuff from the MLD stuff you guys mentioned, so.
You're back on MLDs.
For terminal, he's gonna make sure I write it down.
We're waiting on that.
I know. There's seven of you and one of me, so.
Age fourteen of the land.
Yeah. Oh, what, what? We're gonna wait for you to catch up, Jake.
Yeah, I I got the component. Hold up, you said it's on page fourteen, is where you're at?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, section.
Section four one one.
We'll try to summarize those bullet points into. More concise statements. You could almost use.
I think you could use the last bullet point as just. Just take that one out. And make that a policy, a last bullet point.
I've got you, Susan, the sort of kind of sentences that I put at the beginning of each of the bullet points. As the policies.
Well, I don't think it works for the wildfire thing.
Wildfire in that way, yeah, explaining what the, the opponent, yeah. Okay.
I think we've fashioned a, uh.
Yeah, we'll see. I believe so.
There's something to the back back sense, the, the. Much of the county. Land covers highly subject, highly subject to wildfire. That. Evacuation routes. Now, one of the areas we can consider.
Yeah, which is with regard to, according to the. Density that was part of the rationale for. Um. Looking at the MLDs. We closely list their proliferation of private.
I think it was along pathways due to the high wildfire threat, county evacuation routes from. So, so again, due to the high wildfire threat, the county evacuation routes should be.
Considered considerable.
Be considered in. Diagnosing, uh.
Future land use decision.
Your future land use decisions. Don't look at it. I heard from Myers, right? I think they're important. At that.
Alright. I'm not sure if you guys agreed on.
What'd you say again?
I'd say due to the high wild, due to the wildfire threat in the county. Evacuation routes need to be considered when making land, land use decisions. We're making land use decisions and. Revising code or something along the lines of crafting.
Yeah.
So due to wildfire fire threat in the county, evacuation route should be considered when making land use decisions.
Correct.
And updating. Land use code or something along those lines.
Correct. And then I would, I'd say on the next, the next, the next one there. Land use areas. Should have. Homogeneity. And islands of different land use designations. I'm not concerned with the sense. The sense of. Mission aid, I guess. Especially in rural areas.
Well. Supposedly the whole county's role.
Well. I think that's not.
Yeah, but we're trying to. Emphasize. The interior.
With our land use designations.
Yeah, I would use that word terminology. Land use designations.
Of land use design, well, no. Not. Homogeneity of the land use designations, the mapping of land use designations, if you want to put that one. That's why I said area designations. Or areas designated by. I just thought when Robert told you.
So the mapping of land use designation should have homogeneity to the surrounding area, something along the lines. Yep.
And then, and then I would add the islands. Of different land use designations. I'm assistant.
You want to pull the same sentence over?
I'm sorry?
You want to just pull that same sentence, so if we're talking about the animals? You want to craft differently?
Hmm.
I think that one is actually a policy where you could take the. Everything after homogeneity of that of area designations. Starting with various specific individual land use designations and results and.
Pretty much, I mean.
Take, take the rest of that fair enough and state it as our policy.
There you go.
I think that works, my first.
Yeah.
So start right here, it sounds specific. Anything else we need to?
First, yeah.
We pretty much grabbed it. It's very. Okay. Um. Alright, so you you got kind of what we talked about, Jake?
I have a version of what you talked about.
Alright, my last, my last comment.
Swine.
Yeah. Um.
Self shown.
There's nothing in. The whole comprehensive plan that talks about. Amending it. I don't, I think it's in the code that talks specifically to the process. But. And and there's nothing, there's no component that talks about it, but really, that's what, if you look at sixty five oh eight. I think that's the intent of the implementation component. Is to talk about the process. Of amending it, of, of using it. You know, which our, our implementation component doesn't quite get there. So. I raised it at this point on the land use, which is the most commonly amended. Part of the con plan. Very seldom does the language of the con plan get amended. It's the mapping.
Do you really want to say about that?
Well, not alone. Should we?
You want to say something about?
Well, one should be rare. One thing we could say is that. Consideration of amendments. To the map. Should. Should, should have to demonstrate. That they are non-conflict with any of these policies.
Yeah. Something like that.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Some. Further principles of amending that. Um. Area wide, you know, again, on the principle of not creating islands. Uh, within a larger designated area. Um, if if the applicant really feels it's necessary to do that, explain why. And really, really justify it, which is totally subjective. That's right, I was short, I couldn't come up with. Purely objective language to stick in there.
Some really good language in the last con plan. That went before the, uh. Matrix. And then early goal, as far as I'm sure I have, but it explained that. The mapping is not, it was. That you cannot expect every parcel in a given land use to fit the directions. And. That, that could, it. It was good as far as the plan that should have done a little farther would be excellent to put in there, because that's the rationale that people use. Often, right? I think we're trying to get at something else, a little different than I'm going. Well, well, it would go along with the being rare.
Let's see.
Hey, while you guys are thinking about that, can someone answer for me? Where did we originally come up with the idea of having goals, objectives and policies? As 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 what we wanted to put in our implementation section?
Sixty five oh eight.
Well.
Was in the last plan.
It was in the last plan, that's why it's housed in what's called the implementation component.
Because I look at sixty five oh eight. And I don't see anything in there about that, and we're certainly not putting in here what it says we're supposed to put in here, that that's the only reason I asked.
Very good. I I've asked the same question. I asked it when we did this back in twenty two. I asked it probably the second week I was on the planning and zoning commission back in two thousand fifteen.
So it's my turn?
Yes, your turn, pick up the banner, run with it.
What's the answer?
Uh, because we've always done it that way.
Oh, oh, good. Well, I'm glad I can contribute to that. Thank you.
It was done by the consultant they had the last.
Yeah.
I thought we didn't like what the consultant did, why don't we throw it out and start over?
Well, you just. On holes and.
Most micromanage. So, so the question comes out, where do, where's a good place for the goals and policies and objectives to be housed? The thought was, talking with one of the previous planning directors, here's a concise place where you can go and pick up all the goals and policies, which are supposed to be the driving force behind the comprehensive plan. Okay. Point well taken. But as Eric just said, that's not the direction that sixty five oh eight. And the implementation component gives. It says, how are you gonna do this? What ordinance are you gonna put in place? What policy, what what procedure are you gonna put in place? That's what's intended to be in the implementation component, so either we add that now to this and say, by the way. Here's the operating policies under this con plan. And include, I think that's valid to put that in the implementation component. Because it is how to do business.
I'd have to go look at the.
Yeah, let's pick it up.
Look at sixty five oh eight in detail, but it seems to me that stating clearly what our policies are going to be, that is how we're going to do this. These are the policies we're gonna follow. These are the policies we're going to follow. And and I like the idea of having one. One place where you can go look and find all them, especially in light of the that. Change we made not too long ago, based on this state law or the court case, whatever it was, where we had to change it to not be in conflict with the policies. Of con plan, it's better to have them in one place rather than have.
Yeah.
Three or four or five policies in every component. We have to go through the whole thing to to find out what the policies are. So. I I I I'm, I'd like to continue doing what we're doing. Now, if we think we need to put in a little bit more. I mean, it seems like a lot of the procedural stuff is prescribed by state law anyway and. County code anyway, I'm not sure.
Dave, can you, Dave, can you say that again? Why is it we wanted to pull them all out and put them into one place? You said there was some, did you say some court thing?
Was it? Help me with with remembering that. Was it a change of state law or was it a court case?
It would change the state statute.
Yeah, they said. Right, the 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 criteria changed to. To to read not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan.
From in accordance.
Yeah, from in accordance with it is what it used to say. And so we changed our our code, county code accordingly. I don't know, six, eight months ago, something like that. And and so looking at these policies is going to be something that people are going to do over and over and over again as they evaluate land use decisions. In the future, they're going to go say, okay, am I in, am I not in conflict with the policies of? Of the con plan. So having them all in one place, incisely stated. I think is preferable to moving them to the individual components, which would be, to my mind, would be the alternative. All thirteen components or whatever the number is, and you'd have to pick out the three or four or five policies in there and. I I just think it's more use, more usable to do it this way. And and it is also. I did. You say this is a let's try it or something wrong with it, but I think the fact that this is the way it's been done historically in this county for quite some time. What's, it had to be a compelling reason to change it, in my opinion, because people.
Here's one reason to think about. One reason to think about changing it is that what I feel like you guys are doing is pulling a lot of material up into these policies. Out of the land use component as an example. So then we're saying things, the same things in two different places. And hopefully everybody recognizes that as soon as you start having things. In two different places. Then you start creating confusion down the road when one gets changed and the other doesn't.
True.
Well, we're not, but we 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 specifically didn't put them in the policies, goals and policies. In the. These set out as goals and policies in the components. Previous con plan had them both lists.
Yeah.
It had goals and policies and objectives and so on in the components, and then had them in the implementation plan. Now that does create inconsistencies.
Agreed, agreed.
The old con plan had. So we're trying to put them on one place. You know, we.
And who do we think actually looks at this implementation section?
Well, for another thing, the planning department.
Planning department does, and so do, you know, typically, I would say the the consultants that help people craft their land use. Applications, look at them.
See, it says here in the county's con plan, da, 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 da.
And I think generally the people who come and to the extent people come, third parties come and participate in these processes, they look at them as well.
Okay, no, no, I'm just asking the question just for my edification. Thanks.
Very good. So on the board now is sixty five oh eight, section O.
You bet on that board. I'm not sure what's going on with this one.
Well, it's just easier here. An analysis to determine actions, programs, budgets, ordinances and other methods, including scheduling of public expenditure. To provide for the timely execution of the various components of the plan. That's what's supposed to be in the implementation component. I think we can stay within this now. This whole setup of of po- goals and policies. You know, here are the the active acting or active goals and policies embodied into plan components. But these other things that are supposed to be here, we don't have. And and I don't know of any. Well, there's a couple of city con plans that actually have. Uh, a program for expanding funds to to accomplish the various goals that were set out in the con plan.
But I I I reviewed a number of, they don't have.
There's a couple of cities that are valid and there's one down the southeast, another one in the southeast where they actually did a a C I P. Here's what's going to happen. We're going to expand the roads by this. We're going to, we're going to add libraries over here, though. Way beyond.
But we're not suggesting any.
No, that's it. You don't have to do that. So. Determine actions. Uh, those are our policies. Yeah, I think it's it's. Other methods, that's a huge word, other methods, including other methods. All right, here, here's the acting, acting. Verbage or or direction given by the comprehensive plan towards land development actions. These goals, goals and policies.
So I think we need to forge ahead. I think we need to. Stay with the implementation, general. All right, I'm I'm looking at this. I'm looking at the matrix. It doesn't say exactly if it's a, so for what land use matrix. This generally uses the characteristics of each map designation. As the map covers one twenty one million acres. Map is generally, is general. This is generally. Doesn't say anything about it.
Well, I. That's where I said it, and you'll go for it. I I think their intent was to say you cannot expect your individual parcel to have all the features that are described in this thing. And yet. Many map amendments. Lots of have been made exactly for that reason, because they're, you know, that that. So had it gone a little further, I think that would be intent. That's my impression. Maybe I could be wrong, but. Yeah, I think it was, and and also the practice has been picking one specific thing. I don't have slopes here, therefore I don't, it should not, doesn't warrant that designation of that zone. That was not the intent. It used to say.
Should we say something about that?
We have that, we have that. Yeah.
If you talk of that language and expanded on it a little bit, could be a very. Appropriate thing, that's all.
As we discussed many, many times, trying to get a handle on how to, how to say that slopes or soils do or don't. Perform well and so forth. I mean, the the principle is there for sure. You know, yeah, it's tough to build on a steep slope, but it could be done. So how do you regulate? We regulate it by saying, such as the Alpine District. You're going to propose something on a thirty percent or more slope, show us the engineering plan, that's going to work.
Yeah, I I was under the impression they used slopes there as a, as an example of something that might not be found on your parcel, but.
Yeah, and even that, now with the with the LiDAR survey that was done. We know slope. There's no question. It's not like the old one. Working off about forty foot.
Well. Uh, do we want to say something about slopes and soils or?
I don't know how to. Yeah.
It's just. Are a factor but aren't controlling. Or should not be controlling.
Trouble is, I mean, you can, you can say all these things, here's all the factors that go into deciding, but. We can weight them. There's some discussion we had back in that day when we talked about those. Can could be. It's a checklist of a sort, and you look at all these factors together and come up with the sum total. But have they waited? The soils count more than smoke? Does. Maximity to water bodies way more than, you know.
I'm in favor of doing something like what uh Dave is suggesting of putting in this policy that. You can't expect any given parcel in an area to exhibit all of the characteristics that we use to define. Hey, these areas probably.
But we have some, we have some over, so in four two on our proposed draft. It has that same sense, one point one million acres, map is general nature. It is recognized that some areas may have or may lack features and characteristics that cause them to differ. Somewhat for what is in their land use description. It is not reasonable to expect that everything possible in a land use designation. Details, geographic characteristics, etc. So that's in our.
I mean, I I think that's a good statement of. Policy, a policy. And and Alan's here comment, are you concerned that because we used to address slopes and soils, that people will still? Come back and. Try to bring that subject in or? I mean, we don't, we 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 pretty much excluded it.
There we go.
From this version of the plan, so, but if we want to restate that 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 that's no longer something that we're looking at or not, that's not a factor.
It's not controlling.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with that too. I guess it doesn't hurt to.
Yeah, that covers it. Four point one, four point two, rather, that paragraph above map designation. That was the lead in to map designation, so.
I just removed the word following, so it just said the land use just, land uses described. Probably need to rework that.
Yeah, good idea. Good catch. Excuse, that's what bugs me about, well, even here. If this is, if this thing is put into, you, effect, it's accepted. Any wording proposed is no longer valid. This is it. Shouldn't it just say land use designations, four point two, not proposed? Yes, it's proposed at this point, the whole blooming doctrine is proposed. But it's going to be adopted. So it's no longer revoked.
I agree.
That the old con plan is loaded with proposed this, proposed that.
No, but in the, in the draft of the land use component, where it says. Section four point two proposed, it should say land use designation, not proposed land use designation.
So remember that on the twenty second, we're moving that from your guys' recommendation.
Is that a material change?
No.
And that, I I'm not sure that it occurs many other places, not like the existing.
Cause I think it's a carryover from the existing con plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was trying to buy a consultant.
And even up in chapter four.
There are other consultants out there.
Yeah, but they all do the same.
They're all the same.
Well, they're all. Okay, that sounds good. Anything else? We don't have to finalize this tonight, I mean.
Very good start.
Stuff like that. So I think let's let's draft this up, Jake. And then look at it next time and.
So. Do we want to, I mean, I I had a. A few other component.
No, I'm not saying so, I, yeah.
You'd be just the land use.
Yeah, so what else do you have?
Uh, let's go back up. Go back up to. There's one population. Uh, just change in the A C I areas to something else, areas of city areas of impact or something like that to make it.
Areas of interest or something.
Area of impact.
Area of impact.
Areas of impact, yeah. But I think it needs to say city areas of impact. Not just area of impact like I put in shows.
Well, are we gonna, are we gonna find that acronym somewhere or do you need to spell it out here?
I spelled it out as area of impact and I capitalized it, because that's what statute called it now.
Yeah.
They actually specifically removed city from the acronym and all the verbage.
Right, but in the sentence, can we just say cities? Cities plural area of impact, what area of impact? I mean, it needs some qualification, I think.
Is that impact on or impact to?
Who's impacting?
So what did you have on the?
Okay, so that's that one, uh, transportation.
Did you have any of those?
Population. Or just that, that in number three, policy number three.
I don't think, I don't think there's really much to add to population.
Uh, is that, are we just going to scrap objectives all the way through all this and make them goals? That'd be goal number two.
That that's what I have, is that you combine goals and objectives into one, so I'll make that change throughout.
Well, objective one is is overlapping with policy one.
Yeah. That was my, you know, towards going. I mean, which is the progression, the goal broad, objective narrower, a policy finite. So they should follow, it's like stepping stones.
But so in this case, I would just strike objectives, objective one. I I think we adequately covered it.
Is there a goal that then leads to that policy?
Yes, there already is one. Ensure that the impact of demographic changes, including et cetera, et cetera. That's. That's the goal that says, oh, I'm in, in order to accomplish that goal, I'm going to regularly look at population demographics and projections and. And determine if we need to make any changes as a result of that.
We need to, uh.
You're on population still?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you guys moved on, sorry. I was ahead of you this time.
I think, I think we updated uh the population component to include. The data for twenty twenty three. But I think we also have it for ten, twenty ten, ten for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, we haven't updated it yet. I know we have that data we need to add to the component.
The component itself, not the.
No, it's just, it's just.
In the component.
It's a census data.
Yeah. So we already did with the policy text.
Well, we haven't yet.
The department has. Okay, schools. Again, um, you know, looking at the. Looking at the uh. Objectives, are they goals or are they lifted policies? Are now standard practice.
I think it's.
I mean, and it's weird because. The goal is not a land use goal. That's a community. Keep the community pumping goal.
Nothing.
What else are you going to say?
Well, make sure that land use does not upset the apple cart for the school districts. That's the goal.
Right?
Which is then. Policy in objective one, ensure the development and kind of changes decision do not adversely affect.
But maybe that should be the goal.
Or just, or just stated more not as a, with a, with an action.
Opposed developments.
Goal. My brain's getting tired.
No, I think, I think we can use the first objective as as the goal.
We know proposed developments and county land use system should not adversely impact.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or just take off, ensure that.
Yeah. Yeah, and ensure that it's so subjective anyway, ensure, even sure something.
What are you going to put it?
Well, I think Blair just said, just put it in there, county uh proposed developments and county land use decisions. Should not adversely impact local solutions. Yeah. Should not adversely.
All right, so move that to a goal, take the goal out. Neither three, follow their policies.
Yeah. So now the existing policies, do they stay or may go away or modify or? Oh. Policy number two as written. Bonner County should examine. The school districts, you're gonna examine the impact of land use proposals on the school districts. And tell us what the impact is. And whether they think it should be mitigated. This goes with the whole, the whole theme of the county doesn't truly investigate anything. We take the investigation done by the. Experts. Whether it's a fishing game or U S Fish and Wildlife or school district or fire district.
Bonner County should, should encourage. School districts to examine.
Because the code says. We have to include. The school districts in land use proposals. We have to include them in their analysis.
Right, but this kind of says. What they should be looking at, or we should encourage them to look at.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't say school district should examine because. It's not school district, right? Policy, so. So Bonner County should. Encourage.
I think we said that. Yeah, number two, so number two is there, so. So I think. New policy two might just replace. Written policy two.
Oh, except I think the two, policy number two is a little bit more. Has a little more in it.
Yeah. But it's also, it doesn't.
So the way I read the current policy two. It, it doesn't say that Bonner County. Should determine what the impacts will be.
Well, examine the impacts. Examine the impacts.
The impacts are determined from, you get the impacts from the school system.
That would be good.
School system says, you know, if you do this, this is gonna be the impact.
We've had comments in the last six months from residents saying, why is the county doing what they say? Why aren't you looking at the schools to determine what the impact is? And we say politely.
This says, this says examine the impacts, not determine what they are. So particularly if we move. Uh, current objective two down to a policy. Does the county should encourage school districts to proactively review development applications to determine particular school needs and concerns. We probably maybe wanna make sure that that includes determine the impacts.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then we need to take what the school districts tell us the impacts are gonna be. And consider those while we're making land use decisions.
Consider. Consider the input from school districts.
I'm okay.
As to the impact.
Okay, well, yeah.
That'd be better to, to state. So the county, Bonner County. Should consider the impacts.
So you're just basically changing examine to.
Consider, consider the impacts.
Yeah, because the rest of it, we're talking about teaching mitigation from developers, blah, 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 blah. The county can do that, the school districts.
So I think that works by just changing that to.
Yes. The word in that last sentence, now with safety features, fees or other measures, fees are not. I know the superintendent of the, of, of school district eighty three is coming up with something that she used elsewhere. To get fees imposed. But I, boy.
Well, they can't do it.
Well, they're not calling it an impact fee. They're calling it a using fee or some such thing. She did it down in the other school district in the south. So she's gonna try to do it here, according to the article bigger. But I don't. But I, I wouldn't put it in there at this point. Fees are not.
In well, as being general, it says, you know, sushi meditation.
So when somebody stands up for the hearing and says, my kids go to this school, are you gonna get a fee from this developer that cover the impact? Of that development on my school that. My kid goes to, says right here, you're gonna have fees.
No, it doesn't say that.
That's how it's gonna be interpreted. You crack that door open and regardless of the rest of the sentence, they focus in on one or two words. Time and time and time again.
So where would you do certain?
I just take fees, though. I take the other things. You know, um, someplace we also talks about exactions, and that would be an exact. Hey, that's a good word to put in instead of fees. Exactions or other measures.
That's what it's a matter of.
Maybe. But the. Impact fee ordinance does not mention exactions at all.
Then speaks to exactions.
I really don't believe we should use that word. I, I can put something together in an email.
You're the one that talked about exactions, right? Yeah, you did, man, that's right. That's right. I, I knew I read it somewhere. Recently. All right, well, I. Most of that, just take out the word. Get right over. Yeah, be like, I'm okay with that, yeah. Be, safety features or other measures permitted, as permitted by item code. Okay. Economic developments.
I have not reread. I'd like to do that. Okay, I think that's probably true.
One of the things I was gonna suggest, if we could, maybe we want to identify. I don't know what the right number is, three, four, five of these that we want to address in the next meetings, so we all can go over them and then get prepared.
I think four would be reasonable. That's another thing, the same thing.
So back on the school facilities, do we wanna leave those three as we pull them out of objectives and put them in the policies? Okay. And then sometimes we call it the county, sometimes we say Bonner County, so we wanna, I didn't think, we do seem to be consistent throughout the document. We can just say that county, cause this is the counties. How brands of plan, the implementation component, but. I'll leave that to you guys.
I agree, the, the counties.
Hey Jake, while they're thinking, uh, I don't think you deleted the word ex, exactions out of that last section there.
Yes, yeah, we added it, then removed it. I missed that part, thank you.
Yeah, sure, the extortion. That's what Webster says.
Right, legal extortion, okay.
Well, yeah. Okay, so I have a suggestion, but let's look at next meeting. Economic development, natural resources, hazardous. Whatever it was. And public services. And then we will, if we can get. The, uh, goals and policies that we've discussed. Tonight. Typed up and, and submitted, we'll, and we'll review those next time too, and I think that'll be.
For the. The administrator said, I, I've added this under the, um, in your G drive. Under the implementation and I just put it year twenty twenty five, and I'm just gonna create all the documents as like the twenty twenty five revision. That, that's where these are gonna be housed, if you're looking for them.
Maybe, maybe we add transportation too. So, and we, we said, which ones, economic development, natural resources, hazardous areas. Public services and transportation.
Yeah, and I said, if you, if your screen at home has the ability to put double screens, it's really convenient. Put the component here, put the. Implementation component here.
How do you do that?
Well. What's your system? Well, in Microsoft, you know, P C. So if you go, if you've got a Windows application, a Windows button. Okay. So Eric, just show me, if you bring it up, we've got two things on here. And you just grab ones.
And you gotta minimize the burst, you just slide into the left or right.
Yeah.
It's pretty much a feature now, yes.
Yeah, so. Or I think, and then you can, you can adjust them sidewise and you can even click on one. And it'll, it's expanded like a window here.
All right, great. Uh, what else we have next, next time?
So I think we have implementation component and then. I'll see, I'll, I'll bring, I'll start bringing forth, um, the, I'll try to get up, get a couple of drafts of the, the changes to my land division, the family exemption codes. At least, like, bring you some of that information. I'll see how much I can gather within the next two weeks for that meeting, so.
So we were, um, we were planning on looking at. What we got there, zoning and the land use tables.
Yeah.
Should we? Should we look at that? Now? Rather than just look at one. One subject.
As much as you guys wanna chew on, I guess. So we can look at, I would say, start with. The zoning descriptions and then move on to the use tables. So I think you need to define what they should look like and then define what should happen in those zones.
It looks to me like there's. There are a lot of things that are permitted on the use table, so maybe shouldn't be.
Well, okay, we look at the descriptions of the uses first and get that button down. Then look at, look at this is fit in that zone. That's what we're trying to get.
I think, I think it might be worthwhile as well to have staff come up with a list of all of the. Conditional use permits over the last ten years or so. Um, I've started compiling that and I, we mapped some of those with this last exercise. And I was, as I was thinking through, I think it'd be really beneficial, not just to see where they're at, but what has been applied for under conditional use? And then, all right, so more or less, what's been the demand on the difference in conditional use to strike a calorie? Yeah, so I'll start working on that list as well.
Okay, all right, uh, no, nothing else for the next agenda. That's it. Okay, so then we're, uh. We return until April fifteenth. You've had, uh, four thirty. In this, in this room, fifteen and I, maybe two.